Okay, it is 7:06 and we're gonna call this meeting order. Everyone please stand to the information plate.
Oh, God, we come here to bring the EDC request to our community. We ask you to lead our meeting, play your thoughts, our footsteps and our decisions to do the best we can for this community as a whole to bring more thriving activity, businesses, and that we be the leader to make a difference for all that is here. With all these things, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under thy command, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to roll call? Do you start, Allison? Allison Dowd, serving.
Carrie was on.
Pam Reed. Kathy O'Neill.
Very, very.
Okay, a couple of announcements. First of all, we did give the check to Fish and Nutrition today. We got all the 380 papers signed and she's very excited about that. They're painting the inside of the building and she got the sign on the front of the building. So she's very excited about that and we're excited for that to happen. We have a golf tournament for the fire department coming up on Saturday. Hopefully, the weather will be better for that and see, we also have the Easter egg hunt and the market on the lake. All of them are on the same day and that's April the 8th. Good, I didn't have it in front of me. April the 8th, so the market will be open from 8 till 2:00 and then at 2:00, we'll have the Easter egg hunt. The fire department still need eggs.
Yes.
Fire department still needs eggs. We still need candy to fill eggs and so let me block them off either at city hall or at the fire department.
Or the chamber.
Or the chamber. Thank you, Kathy. Or the police department. Or the police department, okay. Great. So everybody's getting involved. Very good.
That's great.
I picked the bunch up.
Yeah, it is great.
Really good, okay. And let's see, what else do we have?
April 1st, we have the recruiting.
Okay. Go ahead and tell us about that.
We need more firefighters. We had several, we were thought we were fully staffed, but several have gone back to work, have gotten jobs. So our schedule is, you know, could be better. We'd like to have some more people to join the fire department so we can slack up a little bit on some people so they don't have to work such a long shift.
I think you're looking for more experienced people if that's possible.
Medical or five.
Any other announcements? Anybody? The meeting greet for the businesses. Thank you, Allison. The most important thing, April 13th, which is a Friday, no, it's a Thursday. That's Thursday, I'm sorry. April 13th, Thursday, we're going to have a meet and greet for all the businesses at the Deer Run Golf Course. It's gonna be 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Thursday and we're gonna have nice little snackies and drinks and we would love to have all our businesses show up and come meet us on that day.
Oh, and on April 1st, that'll be at 5:30 or 5:00 to 8:30.
Okay, that's the fire department recruitment.
Yes, we're gonna cook hot dogs and hamburgers.
Oh, fine.
On April 1st.
April 1st.
Okay, any other announcements? Okay, and do we have any citizens input related to agenda? No, no citizens input, okay. Then we're gonna go on to our consent agenda. We've got our meeting minutes from November. We didn't have a meeting in December, so we don't have those meetings. We have January, February and March six minutes. Y'all will look over those and approve them and then I will send them on to EDC council to look at. Everybody get a little while to look at them. It's kind of long because of the strategic planning.
Mm-hmm. It's gonna go back to what Todd told us. All right. Okay. Did we mention the golf tournament this weekend?
Those are, when you, our golf tournaments, yeah.
If I'm not, there's a.
Mm-hmm. Sometimes my phone does just a little different thing. Because if you use like Google Docs compared to Adobe, the formatting is like completely different.
Yeah. Did we post the position for the secretary?
Yes, we did. No response.
But we had the one application.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We all have been listening to you a few minutes. Y'all just can't sleep at all, maybe. Five minutes. Can I come up with a little bit of minutes for the last three meetings? It's actually four.
Is it four meetings in November and?
It is November, January, February and March.
And I checked into that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So moving right along to our old business, movies in the park. Rayon Myers and Robert Myers have this projector that their women donate to us and have you heard anything more about a screen?
No, I still need to do now the search for the right screen size.
250 inches.
Oh?
250 inches.
Little bit.
This one will go up for the screen, the screen size of 250 inches.
We can investigate it out there.
250 square inches?
It's okay, you don't mind.
It's not very big.
250 inches is eight, 18 feet and so.
Okay.
But the thing is not only that, it's the output. How much power?
It has 250 gallons, or I'm sorry, 120 gallons and it is at a 720 pixel per resolution.
Yeah, that's, that was something that was costly last time. gallons, they need to be way higher.
I told him that I would take it home and see what's the, what it looks like because that's what my nephews and.
Probably for something in the world.
Yeah, out past without verdict, Harry.
Yeah.
I have a pretty dark backyard at night. At night, there's no lighting back there, so I can take it out there and see what time it is.
Yeah, the one we were looking at was 45 hundred.
Right, gallons. Okay, so I agree, if you could kind of get us more information on next meeting.
That might be good if we had like parks on the lake and wanted to rent some photos or something like that on the screen.
Streaming photos and things.
Yeah. Isn't that advertisements?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, something on the side. That sponsors for that particular event and it's moving all the time while people are looking at the main screen.
Yeah, let's try to get something situated within the next month or so so that we can actually start really planning to do something.
When do you say, when are we going to start movies in March? Like, is there a given month?
We thought we would try to start by June. So that's coming up. We need to get things kind of rolling on that. Okay, so, so it doesn't look like we need to motion on that, we just need to, we're gonna be working on that.
Sure, working progress.
Working progress, okay. Next thing we want to discuss then is the training again. How many of you got a hold of an ad and signed up for the training?
I have, however, when I go in to log in, it's telling me that I need to select what type of membership and then make the payment. So I'm not sure how to go about that.
Okay, she should have already done that, so if you'll get back with an ad and y'all walk through that again because she, she should have made that payment for you and done that. Are you getting any emails from, from them? So they've got you on there somewhere.
Right, no, I can log in. It's just asking me after I log in, you know, under my profile, what type of membership, either the volunteer or active. And then when you select one of those, it makes you pay for it.
Okay.
So my login's there. I'm just not fully registered.
Yeah, that's right. So get with, with an ad. You should be. An active member. I think you would be considered an active member because we paid for that membership. Okay, so anyone else, are you charging?
You're gonna, you're gonna, if you call, this is about a week and a half ago.
Okay, so I will get back with her and get back with you tomorrow on that.
Also, once you go in and you look at the events happening, the Allen one is actually for just the mid-year conference.
No, there's, there's.
There's one named Richardson.
It's Richardson that we need you to go to.
Okay.
It's the sales tax workshop in Richardson from 8:00 to 4:00.
Okay, and that's in September, correct?
And that's September the 22nd.
September the 22nd.
So is many of you that can possibly go to that?
That's what I want.
It's all day thing.
You should carpool.
Exactly, I would love to see y'all all go and all carpool over there back so that everybody gets the chance to do it, that needs to do it and, you know, so that we can get our membership up.
That would mean something.
Doing what we're supposed to.
Yeah, I want to go, but I didn't.
You and I are current.
Okay.
We don't have to go because we did it just this past year and it's been for two years, but next year, she and I'll have to go.
Right. Yeah, I've been looking at it since I've been, so I have to.
I've met a lot of nice people. I mean, that's where we've met, right down laughing too.
And so many other people. It's good networking and please talk to other people.
Oh, yeah.
Talk, talk, talk and find out what they're doing because it really is a good networking tool for learning, you know, what you need to be doing and how to do it. So, yeah, and in fact, that's where I first got to talk to, to a state contractor who was there to help me with figuring out some stuff. So, yeah, please, please do get there and do some of that. Okay, then we're gonna talk about our meeting with the business owners. So Allison said it's really nice looking live and I'm that nice.
Very good.
Very nice. I would like to see us start getting to work on making copies of this and passing it out. If you need to make copies, you can come up here and I can make you some copies or I can make you some tonight before you leave if you like, so that we can start giving these out to our business owners. I've asked them to RSVP to my email so that I can get a count of the count of how many are going.
Right.
And we can get an idea of how much food we need, but we'd like to have little finger foods and.
So it's just on our website?
I just gave this to her today.
So we'll put it on the website and the Facebook page and if you put it on the Facebook page, then we can all share it through our Facebook pages.
Yeah.
I can go down there some.
Okay, we can do that. Now, you know, our website that we canceled, you know, is not there, but we can put it on the city's website. We'll ask to do that tomorrow from right after an ad, but that's another thing I'll ask her. Okay.
Do you have a phone number? In case somebody wants to call and talk to somebody before then.
Well, the only thing with that is our phone number is the city hall phone number.
Well, they can leave a message or something.
I don't know if they have different mailboxes or is it all just in general?
There's, there is a mailbox for the EDC and Kim answers it and then towards on the menu, then she gets on there, I need the mailbox. So if they can call the city hall if they want any more information, they'll get a hold of me and I'll try to get back in touch with you if you have a call.
I'll add that on the post through line.
We are all bringing something and that is something that we probably need to discuss a little bit more. I know I'm going to bring some little desserts that are in my little pastry pocket. It's with different stuffings on them. One of them's gonna be chicken salad and one of them something else. I haven't decided what else I'm gonna put in, but I think a spinach kind of stuffed in it in one of them, cheese and whatever. I'm gonna do something nice.
I'll have the wife make a couple of pans of brownies.
Brownies.
A couple of pans if you mentioned with brownies.
Okay, that sounds good. I can do the sandwiches.
You wanna do some sandwiches?
Okay.
Needs to be finger foods, so it depends on how many people we have, whether or not we need more sandwiches or not.
Exactly.
Finger food.
Right, you do vegetable trial, okay.
Finger food, that's when you'll eat with your fingers. I've just checked.
I can do a quick chat.
Got it. Make sure Larry's got me there. Kathy's gonna do a.
See what I mean?
A free.
I'm not drunk.
Drinks.
I can bring drinks.
You're gonna bring?
I was thinking about that because everybody's talking about food.
Yours is gonna bring drinks, okay.
You need to jump to bring it in.
Are you saying it's vegetables?
Bringing appetizers, okay, and that gets us kind of our food going and I'm gonna talk to James about going earlier early that morning, kind of decorate a little bit, make it pretty. So I'll do that.
So James, maybe you can supply the napkins.
Napkins is hopefully.
By some place and.
That should come out of our EDC budget, so I'll keep that step. We'll take it out of our EDC budget for that, I mean. Okay. I'm sure we'll find something for James too.
No, that's what he already has put in his place.
Yeah, he's good, or he gives us the place, yeah.
It's the most expensive one.
Right, yes, it is. Yes, it is. Anything else we need to discuss about that business meeting?
Candies.
Candy, okay. We'll put him down and he changes it. James, candy. Okay. All right, I think it'll be nice. I think it'll be good to meet and greet. I'm real anxious to meet some, this new business that we've got down here, the Fish and Shack. Interesting.
Fish and Shack?
Yeah, it's just down the street where Morehead used to be.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we're anxious to get to know them a little better and some things. Okay, so I guess that's all the business we need there and wish I could think of something else we need to do for that meeting.
Just let everybody know.
Okay, then we're gonna be right along to you bids for fixing the bathroom part. In your part packet, you have bids from Military Plumbing, from Tri County and from Tejas and from E-North. We have four of them. Nice. Kathy, thank you so much for contacting these people and getting them to come out and visit with us at the bathrooms.
It's always a nice deal.
Yeah. My husband, every time I said I was going to meet somewhere at the bathroom, he was like, what?
Does anyone know what you heard about any of these companies?
Yes.
I will tell you some things that I know, okay. Tejas came out as one of our first ones that came out and, and he said that they keep parts so they don't have to go look for parts. So that's kind of a plus in their thing. Everyone else said they would have to go find the parts, so that was kind of good about them. Then let's see.
Do you have any of the parts?
The parts that we're gonna need, we're gonna need for the bathrooms, Jay, or a big business that have a local unit. So they, they, because they're a big unit with just a local satellite, they have more access to the parts than some of the other ones did. Tri, Tri Country gave us the lowest bid and I think we used them before for park restrooms and for other things in town. So that's in, that's on their part, you know, that we used them before.
Their only deal is access to the parts.
Their only deal is getting access to part, to parts they need. They do have problems with that.
Yeah, it's that we are sure it's getting, but it might have to go there.
I'm wondering on the Military Plumbing, it's only showing the valve replacements and not faucets.
And if you'll notice, there also are the highest gear.
Right.
But you read in the description at the top, it says laboratory sinks. Do you see that?
It says it will have a hot and cold pressure balance system.
Okay, so.
I do know that the North, the Texas, North Texas is the one that Finland and Greenville both used for their facilities and everybody's been real happy with those.
Okay, so your Tejas has more on here that they're agreeing to do. They're replacing supply lines with the other two, the first two buildings they're plumbing in Tri County, but Kathy does not have this bid. Your North Texas one has more listed that they're willing to do, which was, and they're both within line of each other of the same price. So personally, we'd be looking at these two and not these two.
You're right on point.
Yeah.
I was going to take them, yes.
Yeah. So your North Texas is experienced with the Greenville products. Mm-hmm.
VP to my email so that I can get a count of the count of how many are going.
Right.
And uh we can get an idea of how much food we need. Uh but we'd like to have little finger foods and.
So it's just on our website?
Um I just gave this to her today.
So we'll put it on the website and the Facebook page and if you put it on the Facebook page and we can all share it through our Facebook pages.
Yeah.
I can go down there soon.
Okay.
We can do that. Uh now, you know, our website that we canceled. You know, it's not there, but we can put it on the city's website. And we'll ask to do that tomorrow from right after tonight, but that's another thing I'll ask her. Okay, uh.
Do you have a phone number here in case somebody wants to call and talk to somebody before then?
Well, the only thing with that is our phone number is the city hall phone number.
Well, they can leave a message or something.
I don't know if they have different mailboxes or is it all just in general?
Uh there's, there is a mailbox for the EDC and uh Kim answers it and then towards our meeting and she gets on there with. I need the mailbox. So um if they can call the city hall if they want any more information. Uh no matter how many meetings I try to get back in touch with people who have called.
I'll add that on the um post.
We're all bringing something. We are all bringing something and that is something that we probably need to discuss a little bit more. I know I'm going to bring some little desserts that are in my little uh. Pastry pocket. It's with different stuffings on them. One of them's gonna be chicken salad and one of them something else. I haven't decided what else I'm gonna put in, but I think a spinach kind of stuffed in it in one of them. Cheese and whatever. I'm gonna do something nice.
I'll have the wife make a couple of pans of brownies.
Brownies.
A couple of pans of brownies.
Okay, that sounds good. I can do the sandwiches.
You wanna do some sandwiches? Okay.
Needs to be finger foods, so. Depending on how many people we have, whether or not we need more sandwiches or not.
Exactly. Finger food.
Right. You do vegetable trial? Okay.
Finger food, that's when you'll uh eat with your fingers. I've just checked.
I can do a quick chat.
Kathy's gonna do a.
See what I mean?
A free.
We'll be not drinks.
Drinks.
I can bring drinks.
You're gonna bring.
I was thinking about that because everybody's talking about food.
Yours is gonna bring drinks, okay.
You need to jump to bring it in.
Are you saying it's bedrooms? Or just one?
Bringing appetizers, okay, and that gets us kind of our food going. And uh I'm gonna talk to uh James about going earlier early that one, kinda decorate a little bit, make it pretty. So I'll do that.
So James, maybe cancel by the um napkins.
Napkins.
Or your, like, place and.
That should come out of our EDC budget, so. I'll keep that step. We'll take it out of our EDC budget for that. I mean. Okay. I'm sure we'll find something for James too.
No, that's what he already spent in the place.
Yeah, he's good or he gives us the place, yeah.
The most expensive one.
Right, yes it is, yes it is. Anything else we need to discuss about that business meeting?
Candies.
Candy, okay.
We'll put him down and he changes up my look.
James, candy. Okay. I think it'll be nice. I think it'll be good to meet Green. I'm real anxious to meet uh some, this new business that we've got down here, the Fish and Shack. Interesting.
Fish and Shack?
Yeah, it's just down the street where Morehead used to be.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So we're anxious to get to know them a little better and some things. Okay, so I guess that's all the business we need there. I wish I could think of something else we need to do for that meeting.
Okay, just let everybody know.
Okay, then we're gonna be right along to you bids for fixing the bathroom part. In your part packet, you have bids from Military Plumbing. From Tri County. And from Tejas and from Team North.
Thanks, man.
Four? We have four, isn't it? Nice. Kathy, thank you so much for contacting these people and. And uh getting them to come out and visit with us at the bathrooms.
This is nice, dude.
Yeah, yeah.
Warm and cozy.
Yeah, my husband, every, every time I said I was going to meet somewhere at the bathroom, he was like, what? Does anyone know anything about any of these companies?
Yes.
I will tell you some things that I know, okay. Tejas um came out as one of our first ones that came out and, and he said that they keep parts. So they don't have to go look for parts. So that's kind of a plus in their thing. Everyone else said they would have to go find the parts. So that was kind of good about them. Then, let's see.
Parts?
The parts that we're gonna need, we're gonna need for the bathrooms, Jay, are a big business that have a local unit. So. So they uh, they, because they're a big unit with just a local satellite. They ha- have more access to the parts than some of the other ones did. Tri, Tri Country gave us the lowest bid and um. I think we used them before for park restrooms and for other things in, in town. So that's in, that's on their part, you know, that we used them before.
Their only deal is access to.
Their only deal is getting access to part, to parts they need. They do have problems with that.
Is that we are sure it might happen. I'm wondering on the Military Plumbing, it's only showing the valve replacements and not faucets.
And if you notice, there also are the highest gear.
Right. But you read in the description at the top, it says laboratory sinks. Did you see that? It says it will have a hot and cold pressure balance system.
Okay, so.
Um I do know that the North, the Texas, North Texas is the one that uh Finland and Greenville both used for their facilities. And uh everybody's been real happy with those.
Okay, so your Tejas has more on here that they're agreeing to do. They're replacing uh supply lines with the other two, the first two buildings they're plumbing in Tri County, but Kathy does not have this bid. Your North Texas one has more listed that they're willing to do, which was um. And they're both within line of each other of the same price, so. Personally, we'd be looking at these two and not these two.
You're right on point.
Yeah.
Oh, I was going to take them, yes.
Yeah. So your North Texas has experienced with the Greenville parks. And what goes on in public bathrooms. I mean, you're talking about putting a camera down the drain and. Doing it during our, our business hours, not late nights, on a weekends, not being in a rush. They seem to be more on top of what needs to happen based on their estimate here and their explanation of what they're willing to do. And they're, they're, they're a little bit higher than the other companies. But um they're, they're doing more.
You're talking about, you're talking about that North Texas.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yeah. In comparison to the two.
I like Team North Texas, but I like the guy from Tejas because he seems smarter.
Who, who is it?
I mean, I.
Which company is?
The Tejas.
Oh, Tejas, okay, yeah.
He's seem knowledgeable. I mean, all of them were nice guys.
Everybody was very, very nice. We really wanted a good experience with all of them.
They asked a lot of questions. They were trying to make sure they got everything into the bids. So it's hard for me to choose, but.
The one on Tejas is mentioning electronic components. I thought we were getting rid of the electrical. We are, we are getting push button uh on the sinks. The, the toilets themselves, the way they are um. Are set up.
So when he's saying replace the electronic components, he doesn't mean with.
Yeah.
Replace with.
With something else.
Which one has parts?
Yeah, Tejas.
Tejas has parts.
That's what's laying a make for them, but.
What?
I mean, if everybody likes Team North Texas, we could say.
Here.
Both for them as first and if they don't have the parts, move on to the second one.
Okay, here's my take on it. I haven't spoken yet.
Sure.
And the, the first thing I, I know is over this four, yes, we have a loan, we have an extremely high one, which pretty much is like paying for the warranty. Twice, this is what it is. This is a way that they use to just camouflage the deal. So these two to me, they are out of the reach. The really low one, um this guy, both bands to the rhythm of our music, pretty much. Now, these two guys here, they seem to know exactly what we're looking for.
Yeah.
And I can tell that both of the descriptions are pretty much online, except Team North Texas, they are adding what sewer camera. Which seems like we have a re- uh a blockish, a really serious blockish down there, okay? They have the equipment for it. Both of these companies, they can tell you they have parts and all of that. Everybody will have the parts. Why is it? Because depending on the manufacturer, they just need to make a phone call and send me replacements and that's it. But what is exactly what catch my attention? Team Texas over to us, Team Texas is a general contractor. If we have any other issues besides plumbing, they can take ours. To me, this is gonna be a once, a, a one-stop shop.
I'm pretty sure Team North Texas told me he could get the parts in two weeks. Pretty sure.
And uh, and I believe having a general contractor all in one stop is better than to call a plumber, then let's call now electrician, then, then let's call now. A uh, a, somebody from structural. So if Team North Texas, while repairing the plumbing, they found an issue in the spot. They already know how to identify. This is not normal. Let me call my structural guy and he will tell us what to do from this point on. So I believe these people here is going to save us time.
This is just a replacing the electro- electrical components that we didn't plan on going back with the electric.
Right, I think, I'm not sure if it was just their wording of it or what, but that's what I was saying.
I would like to think it's their wording because on the actual description, they said replace toilet flusher meter.
Right.
With, which controls the flow, okay? So that's replacing something that was electronic with something else.
Yeah, I think it was just their wording.
Rebuild the laboratory uh bathroom flushes including replacement of the stems and control the water flow. That's another electronic that has to be replaced. Okay, now, they do not talk about unplugging the main drain. They are not talking about the snake. They are not talking about the sewer camera in here. So based on the numbers, it's only a $200 difference, pretty much that's what it is. And we're getting demolition, we're getting uh installing the mixing bottles. We're getting, getting the four bottles and everything that isn't here costs a camera service. The camera service itself is an $800 ticket.
Sure, this is a rebuild and this is a new.
Exactly, pretty much. Plus, they are general contractors.
Yeah.
And I think at this point, this is what we need. Because we have more than plumbing issues over here.
Sure.
That's just my take.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion?
Oh, made a motion to hire the services from the North Texas team or the Team North Texas. Where the plumbing works, we don't have the restrooms, I would go to part.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that just makes me feel very good. We're getting something done over there now. I will get ahold of them tomorrow morning. I will also send some newsletters to these people that we.
I want you to, I want you to put a little rush on there because I'm gonna be needing a shower pretty soon.
What are you saying? Okay.
Yeah, we don't wanna talk to you about that real quick.
Yes, we have and, and uh I'm glad that we've taken on our own and got our own bid order because I think we've made more progress.
They're just, just, public works are really busy with a lot of things.
Exactly, exactly. They've got a lot on their plate, so I'm not.
Well, you did good to, you did good to get four.
Yeah.
Or you did.
I'm mad.
She, she got them, she got them over there and then we met with them, so we.
That's great.
Yeah, it was great. Okay, uh so moving on. Uh last time we talked briefly about the ISD Foundation Fishing Tournament. Okay, apparently this is a fishing tournament that every year the EDC has sponsored. And they're just asking us to do the same sponsorship that we have done in the past for it. Which was $1,500? Is that what it is?
I believe so. Fifteen?
No, no, it wasn't that much. It was five, five hundred, five hundred, but I think in the past we've done up to fifteen.
Right.
So they're asking for $500 uh for sponsorship um on the fishing tournament. They already have a sign for us.
Right.
We're willing to do this, so.
This is, this is the school.
And this is the school.
It's very.
I, I think we are five hundred to go. I think.
We uh, I, the school really needs some help with this stuff. This goes with, uh it is not going, money that we're donating is not going towards the, the winners or anything like that. It's actually going into the funds for the school, the school itself. And so the chair will entertain a motion? I'll make a motion that we uh donate $500 to assist with the fishing tournament for that, one on ISD foundation.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright, so next thing. Okay, so uh the next thing is uh, we said that we were gonna put an application on website, Secretary and Matt did that. And we did not get any other takeaways on there. We have.
Just that one? That's all?
That's all we got. Um and I, I think uh the lady we got the application from is a really nice lady. I've known her for a number of years. She's not available for the April meeting because she's going to be out of town and with a previous cruise that she already had booked. But she would be more than willing to, to start in uh, in May. So if, uh the chair will entertain a motion along with the hiring of.
I'll make the motion.
Sylvia leads.
I'll make the motion to hire Sylvia, which is her secretary.
Second that motion.
I hear you had something to say. It's my hearing, sorry.
I think we should write her out of the news. Have a chance to talk to her in person in one meeting before, and then right at that moment, we can make that decision, what you think?
We can do that if you, if you like, we can.
I think that, I think that will be the best for her and for us too, so she can see us and hear from us expectations and we can get up.
Okay, so I will, I will invite her to our uh May meeting and we can go from there if you want. Just do not stake that as a motion. Okay, can I have a secretary? Sorry. The chair will entertain a motion then.
April meeting, right? She's gonna, oh, she's not gonna be around, I'm sorry.
So the chair will entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll change my motion to like to invite this lady to the May meeting so we can discuss hiring her secretary.
I second.
Okay.
Actually, would it be great if you were able to coordinate with her? I mean, she can connect that please be as soon today, but it's okay.
Yeah, I think that has, that might be really good. On smart.
That'll save us some time.
So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we keep that secretary until we get together.
Uh yes, uh I, I, yeah. I would second that, but I can't.
We'll all agree to that one.
Okay. Off the books.
Off the books, okay. Alright, so uh I guess we're going to adjourn it to, oh, next thing on the list, sorry, no. Plans to clean up the property uh that we bought.
I, I attempted to get ahold of my neighbor, but I only talked to him through the fence, like, you know, Wilson and Tim, the old man Taylor. So um he hasn't been in his backyard lately.
What do you need?
Okay, so what I did was I called six different uh estate uh companies. I got response back from two of them. And both of those take a percentage of the profit, uh your profits, which we expected. Um and uh because of our conflicts and schedule all this last week. I'm meeting with both of them tomorrow. So uh.
Do they have to have a minimum amount? Like, what if we didn't make $20?
No, no, they're still taking a percent.
Yeah, what I'm scared of is when they see this place, which we're already going to do it.
I've seen worse.
They like.
You have to expect it, yeah.
No worries.
Yeah.
What time are they?
I'm meeting one of them at two o'clock and one of them at four o'clock.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, uh I'm gonna try, I'll try to be there.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'd like to see, because I've done it. I have a license, a Mark Premier license.
I know.
Like that, you know, so I, I've done it before, so I can just stand around and look.
Alright, so anyway, they're gonna meet me tomorrow and one of them is meeting me at two and one of them is meeting me at four. Uh we'll discuss more particulars at that point. Um and um. Our next meeting is in two weeks about. So by that time, I, I hope you have all the information from them and bring that to the next meeting for us to decide which one to do. If, if both of them agree to do it, you know, I'm afraid they're gonna look at that and go. Then we're gonna be down to one.
If, if you like, uh if you like those two companies, you can actually ask them to send you already the contract. They need to generate a contract.
Yes.
And then you bring them to the meeting, we make a decision and we execute right there. That would be save time.
Yes, that's what I would like to see happen. That would be great. Very much would like to see happen.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, having the contract with all of the details, profits, margins, whatever it is, and what they're going to do with the leftovers. Which is pretty much, and we don't have to um, that'll work.
Yeah, well, some of this stuff is going to be just trash. I know that there's just some trash in there too, you know, so.
But they know, they know that. They know that. We don't need to tell them.
Be able to see through it all.
Yeah. Now, when you're talking about cleaning up, are you talking about the uh yard, the entire yard? Do you need mowing? Do you need this or that? What, what do you wanna clean up? I don't mean the building.
I know.
I mean.
Yeah.
We want to empty the building.
Yeah, right now, our main goal is to empty the building.
Right, right.
And then after that, then we're gonna have to work on what we're gonna do with that yard.
Facilities.
Well, we have a person that does that. My husband, I can make him volunteer to do that.
We're good. We, we will probably take you up on that.
I don't ask much of him, so.
Hold on a second. Who does the maintenance and, and rolling end of like?
The city does, but I'm gonna tell you right now, if we're going to maintain that building, we're going to have to.
We're gonna have to maintain the whole, whole area.
Because it would be a sad project.
Yeah, at this point, we have to break away some from the city with our incorporation uh taking place.
Yeah.
Because we're right on the boundary there.
We're right on the boundary. And you know, that property is much larger than I thought it was when I got the survey back.
Does it go over to that fence?
It goes all the way over to Amets.
Oh, nice.
To the fence or pass the fence?
Pass the fence, right to Amets.
Or right to the building?
Right to the building.
I didn't know it did that.
So it is.
How far back?
And it goes back. I don't have it in front of me, but it goes back kind of away, it encroaches on the park.
He brings that survey next to the next meeting?
Yes, I should, yeah.
Does it, does that propane tank that's sitting near behind and to the left of Amets, is it on that property?
I don't know.
Do we, do we have a registered local business intent that they do mowing? Registered local business.
Oh, registered.
That they do mowing.
Uh I know several of them that register.
But they are registered.
Licensed.
Licensed.
Um we use one for the HOA that is registered and licensed.
They're from West Milwaukee.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I. Well, no, they're, and they have insurance. I'm trying to think. I mean, they did get, they did work here, but I'm not real sure now, but I'm thinking about it whether.
The reason why I'm asking, number one, I'd like that business to be west working, registered in the county. And if it's registered in the county, of course, they need to have insurance and all that. That's official business, not because Mr. Tommy behind here, he mow your yards with a.
Right.
Who did we have mowing the property across the street?
The city's been doing it.
So.
For us, and then they, they just start and let it go, you know.
You mean the old cemetery?
No, no, the property we used to own across the street.
Oh, over here?
Yeah, the city used to take care of what was taken care of and then.
Still own that.
Then they just.
We still own it.
We still own that property. Eventually, we will have it sold.
So where I was going with my deal.
Yes.
Is that we, if we have one of those companies, we can actually generate work for that local company by giving them the chance.
Yes.
Of maintaining the property we just acquired.
Right.
Plus. Plus, when the city is overflowing with work, if they get into a deal, they can actually take care of maintaining the park.
Also, they could put their little sign up front that says maintained by such and such.
Exactly.
Bond service.
For a special rate. This maintenance is sponsored by, boom, and the company named by them. Not like adopting a road price for a special rate is...
So for, for outside maintenance?
It is sponsored by this local company.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that's a good idea. We need to support our local companies.
I'm sure.
Um, so I guess we'll just announce right here if anyone knows of a registered local company that is...
This is what I'm, this is what I'm going next to. Even though if we don't have a registered company, but we know somebody that does that, let's push that person to register and make it official too.
Right, yeah.
So what if the guy lives in Point?
That's not Westewalken.
I would register over here. Do they, is it, is it haunted?
It is, it is haunted, but then Westewalken won't get any of the sales tax revenues.
Right. I just wonder if that's got to stay in that from our road.
Because I think we have somebody behind here that if he has his trailer and all that, he goes all the way to Rockland. But it seems to me like he is not an official.
So when you're not, you're not gonna get that done?
Okay, yeah, we could, we could do that.
Maintenance.
So if someone's interested in that, contact us by City Hall. See what we can do.
You know what? We can post that on the website or Facebook.
We kinda have to table that part of it for now, but as long as we're just discussing the maintenance for the...
No, no, what, no, what I'm saying is post the available opportunity for maintaining the property.
Yes.
So we're looking to hire?
Right.
A local company, a local Westewalken, uh, mowing company. Anybody interested?
Right.
Call this number, reply back, whatever it is.
Yes. Absolutely, we can do that. Okay. Okay, so we need to adjourn for executive session again. So this is short, short, brief moment, and it is, um, seven fifty-five, I don't have my watch.
Did we need to make any...
What do we do?
Uh, no, we're not. Taylor, I am.
Yeah.
I am.
Huh?
I am.
I am.